Then call the roll.
Bird.
Here.
McGinn.
Stein.
Here.
Mormon.
Here.
Phil Piper.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
Ray.
Here.
Okay, number two, approval of agenda.
Any changes, Your Honor?
Uh, no changes this evening.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All the roll.
Stein.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Phil Piper.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Okay, number three, presentation of petitions and other communications. A annual tax increment financing report, and we have Maggie Berger.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Wonderful. So, we've provided you your annual TIP report. Um, this is our colorful pages. I'll remind very quickly. The general obligation bond debt is on our red pages. We outline that your 2013 bond will be paid off in 2023. You still have the 2015 bond and the 2020 bond outstanding. Those are very low interest rates, so we would suggest at this point in time you would not pay the 2015 bond off, although it is callable at this time. Uh, interest rates probably in a 10-year market today are between four to four and a half percent on general obligation bonds. Page two of the red section of the report um does outline the ways that you will pay that debt back. So you will pay it back with TIP revenues. Some of the debt will be paid with sewer, stormwater, water revenues, and then a portion is paid with road use tax as well. It does show that the city has a debt service levy for the next couple of years outstanding. Um, and then it does look as if the debt service levy will go away based on the repayment sources of what you have outstanding at this point in time. Our orange pages, which are the next section, uh, this outlines that you do just have the one sewer revenue refunding bond that is outstanding. These were refunded in 2021 at a very low interest rate of 1.1097%. Uh, we have approximately $5,165,000 remaining. And the biggest takeaway from this is a very large column that's empty. That's us total property taxes. I remind everybody that you cannot pay revenue debt with property taxes. It must be paid with the revenues or the system, and in this case, it's also TIP revenue that is collected on the growth areas uh that were intended for this original project or were necessary to be done. So we've got that, but no, no property taxes are levied for the repayment of any of this debt. The city has a couple three rebate agreements outstanding. We have noted those on our purple pages. Um, we have also put what area they are with, and we've got a new area, the South Boone Housing. Um, we've got the southeast. Uh, we've got two agreements right here on page one for TIP Senior One Inc. and then Boulders Incorporated. Uh, we go on to page two of this, and we follow up with two more for Midland Power and B J F Boone Family L P. I note that all of them are annual appropriation, which means because you've taken that action, you only have to count the amount of debt outstanding in one fiscal year against the TIP and not outstanding altogether. Um, so we don't have to count the aggregate of the agreement, which could be substantial, as these are all large rebate agreements. Just remember that TIP has to grow in value, and they have to pay new taxes for you to rebate anything back to them. There are, uh, there is, I should say, one agreement. Um, your uh, Tri-West Development Agreement, which is subject to low to moderate income set aside, that LMI percent is 30.9%. So we do show that um as not only the annual appropriation that you owe the developer, but also the amount that is estimated that you want to set aside in low to moderate income. And that is just whenever you have at-market housing that you're incentivizing with TIP, you must do the low to moderate income set aside. But that can be spent on a, a number of projects. I know that you've spent those dollars in the past. Um, and so this new agreement does require that. We go on to our yellow pages, and this is where we outline from our original red pages and that sewer revenue debt on the orange page. These are the portions of debt that are being paid with TIP. So out of the 2020 and the 2013 bonds, um, we are paying some out of the southeast TIP district. We transfer that into the general obligations debt service principal and interest so that we've got that number. We're also using uh the west central TIP area for that sewer revenue bond from 2021 as well as the southwest and the southeast areas. So all of um, all of those areas were affected by the need for this sewer project originally. So we're transferring that into those sewer funds. We also then bring in your purple, which is the uh, as well as the low to moderate income. And at the very far right. As to where, uh, how much you would need to certify for fiscal year 24 or the approximate amount um that you for fiscal year 24 and in the TIP area. When we talk on the green pages, we look at the general obligation debt capacity of the city. And so if we look at column number two and read straight down, that is fiscal year 23. The city of Boone has an actual valuation of 844,520,000. This gives you a statutory debt limit of 42,226,000. This is a significant increase um of 8.7% over last year's um property valuation, which is fantastic. The outstanding maturities of your debt is about 3,595,000, because we only must count the G O debt outstanding in the red section, not the sewer revenue debt. That does not count against debt capacity. You've got rebates um outstanding. This is just the rebate amount. You will pay back $735,000 of principal, and you will have TIP uh annual appropriation of rebates again of 221,000. We do not include the LMI number in your debt capacity. That's not required by state law. Remaining debt capacity that's not obligated is 39,366,000, or about 93%. If we withhold 80, uh, 20% of that, saying that you only ever want to issue up to 80% of your total debt capacity, we would take off about 8.4 million, and so that would leave you with remaining debt capacity of 30,920,000 dollars. Now, we did build in a growth rate of 2%, just so that you can see um over this page and the next page, how that uh affects your debt capacity in the future as you plan and, and consider different projects coming forward in the city. And then our blue section, I, I will like give you a comment that we have multiple blue sections. So we will um sort of walk through the first couple here, the northeast district. Although there's no debt, so we've got kind of about three fourths of the page down, there's no debt or obligations currently outstanding. The way that we read this upper part of the section is this is incremental growth in the TIP area above the base value. So remember, when a TIP area is set, there's a, there's a set base value. Anything that grows over to above, that's actual TIP dollars that you can collect upon. So the growth in valuation in the northeast district is 532,000 in commercial, about 45,000 in personal property or at. Major growth is 29,000 in residential property and about $94,000 in multi-residential. If we take that $16 million worth of growth and take that times the TIP tax rate of $32.66, you produce about $537,000. Again, you're not using any of the northeast TIP dollars, so they're unclaimed. You haven't been using them for a number of years now, but there is still um the ability out there uh for the collection or that, that area is still there, that if it starts to grow and you have obligations outstanding against it, um, we definitely can and look to do that. So that goes on for two pages. And then the most active TIP area that you have right now is, is uh the southeast district. And that one, again, uses the same methodology up above that. This is the incremental growth above the base. The total property TIP valuation there of 171 million. And if we take that times the TIP tax rate, that produces about $5,605,000. You are using this not only for general obligation debt, but for that revenue debt as well as rebate um and LMI obligations. Uh, so you have unclaimed TIP dollars there of about $4,946,000. I just remind you, you know, um, when your TIP districts grow, um, you always have the ability to collect a little bit more in, in TIP revenue if necessary, but you must have obligations that have gone through either the urban renewal process or, or the process that legally makes them an obligation that you can collect TIP on. This goes on for multiple pages, but I won't uh bore you with all of that. I'll let you walk through um sort of all of those for you, because we also have then the southwest. We have the west central, north Boone housing, and now the south Boone housing as well. Uh, we do anticipate that the north Boone and the south Boone housing, we will continue to see um added growth in those areas as, as time goes on. So are there any questions about that information?
Oh.
Well, thank you all very much for having me electronically tonight. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Okay, be public hearing for the consideration of sale of public right of way in the 1100 block of Marion Street, blocks three and four, Green Castle Edition, southwest, southeast. Any written comments? Any public comments? Not this public hearing is closed. C, public hearing for the consideration of sale of public right of way in the 600 block of Webster and 1200 block of West Sixth Street, block 40, original Boonsborough, northwest, northwest. Any written comments?
No.
Any public comments? Not this public hearing is closed. Uh, report of standing committees, policy administration. Uh, BJ is not with us.
I'm getting announcement times. Oh, sure. Yeah, I'll take this. Um, so on, on our packets here, we have a resolution 3054 approving the promotion of David Aides to the building official position. Uh, the policy and administration committee, uh, well, Bill took application from internal candidates, got one application from an internal candidate. That was Dave Aides, uh, policy administration committee, and uh Bill had an interview a couple of weeks ago, and uh the committee voted unanimously to uh promote Dave Aides to this position.
Okay. It's been a motion. It a motion to approve.
To approve.
I can't. Call the roll.
Here.
Mormon.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Stein.
Yes.
You skipped Cole.
Oh.
Mine's a yes, though. So that's all right.
Asked it out to protect your new last name.
Gotcha.
Okay, next, safety, Stephen.
Uh, we have a meeting on the 30th at 4:30 if there's agenda items.
We have one, that one you.
You know, they're, we'll talk about.
Okay.
Hey, uh, you told me, Betty, Stephen.
Uh, that discussed capital improvement projects for utility plants, and I'm going to turn this over to.
Thank you, sir. So at the last utility committing staff brought forward to them uh projects that need to be done at the uh water treatment facility as well as the wastewater facility. Um, as we looked at these, um, we evaluated what we have for revenue coming in and whether or not we could pay for these bonds with the cash that we have that comes in every, every budget year. Uh, the result of that was that what we cannot. Um, so we talked with the utility committee about a rate increase for water and a rate increase for sewer. So you, to give you some background, the last rate increase for sewer was to July 1st, 2010. The last uh rate increase for water was July 1st, 2016. As we move forward with these projects, we uh looked at what we would need to bond for each one of those. And if you look at the sheets that were placed on your desk, uh, it'll cover some of those, and I'll get to those in, in just a second. Um, there are several projects on, on each one. Uh, to give you some background on that, uh, we asked uh S E H, which is a generating firm, to do an evaluation at the water utility plant on our ground storage reservoir. And then if you remember, council also approved a study of our wastewater plant uh to look at any possible uh expansion in the future. That was the goal of it. Uh, we have, we have received all those. We've talked about them uh in utility committee. Uh, we talked about that at the uh meeting as well. Um, if we were to bond 2.5 million for the water, 2.5 million for wastewater to complete these projects, uh, there are a couple options. Uh, you could do a 10-year bond. Excuse me, which would require a 3% increase for three years. A 15-year bond, which we normally don't do, and staff does not recommend this, uh, is a 15-year at 2% increase each year for three years. In addition, part of the discussion at the utility committee was we hadn't raised uh rates for so long, again, 2010 for sewer, excuse me, 2016 for water, that we talked about an inflationary increase each year so that we can keep, keep on track of these projects. Uh, as you know, these, both of these plants were built in the late 90s. Um, we're seeing significant issues at these plants, and these are projects that, that we have come up with in talking with our engineer uh on what needs to be done. So I'll move forward, excuse me. So one funding for these would be through S R F. And that's the state revolving fund for projects like this uh that we would borrow this money from, or that's how we would bond. I will note to you that this money from S R F can only be used for projects. It cannot be used for equipment. So as you look at these sheets and as we go through them, you'll see that there are expenditures on there for equipment that is needed. We can't, so when we bond, if we bond, we cannot use that money for equipment. So I talked about what we have each year for revenue, for cash, for projects. That cash will need to be used for that equipment, because we can't bond for it through, at least through S R, S R F. Before I go, if there's any questions up to this morning, otherwise I'll go to the sheets that we can go over real quick. Okay, so if you go to the first one, the water utility, everything in purple, that's purple shaded what we would uh need to bond for. Uh, the first one for water utility. Um, well, let me cover 2023 to show you the amount of money that we have spent already on these. 410,600 dollars for the South Water Main Project. That was covered, as you know, for the Emergency Recovery Act. So we got that money from the government. Uh, to finish, the exterior wall in 23 was 37,000. We used cash. The backwash blower project uh at the water plant. Um, so there was one backblower there for this that cleans our water before we send it to the city and, or to our customers, and that was 20 some years old. So we, we opted to, if you remember, to put another backwash blower. There was a setup in the, in the water plant for that. So that's been completed, and you'll see later in my report under the engineering report that we have a preliminary substantial completion of that project. That was 192,800. So the art money was used for that. Uh, the control computer upgrade, which is SCADA, which runs the, basically runs the water plant. We're using cash for that. That's 200,000. And a security system upgrade, which is the original since it was built, needs upgraded for 40,000. Now, if you go to 2024 for water, you will see that the first one is roof replacement. Mind, the roofs have never been replaced on these buildings uh since this was done, and some are actually older than that, that, that we need to replace. 410,000. That is what would be included in the bond. Um, farther down, uh, lime slakers. Uh, 400,000. Those are things that we need to replace. Obviously, I don't have the expertise to explain what those are. I can certainly get those answers for you from the engineer. Uh, and now there's 300,000 in that same one for ground storage roof repairs of where we store our water. And then if you look under 2026, uh, that's down uh in the purple, which is the ground storage reservoir of 1,174,960 dollars. Now, if you'll just give me a minute here. So this is the report from S E H on that ground reservoir evaluation, and what I want to show you here. So this is part of the report, and these are some of the pictures that, why there's a concern about this. You have a crack at the west corner. You see in that picture there. Uh, and you'll see uh seeping cracks at the northwest wall. Roof slab edge needs repaired, as you can see here, if you understand all of it. Another roof slab uh is right there, and then retaining wall on the east corner that needs repaired. Uh, miscellaneous cracking and seeping throughout the reservoir in this picture. Uh, seepage pawning at the base of the wall. So you can see there are some serious problems out there that need done, and this one may be the most telling. So this is a screenshot of deteriorated concrete beam that's inside the building from a dive video that, when we had an inspection done. And here's the problem, list of probable cause from S E H, which I, I already previously gave you. So that is the water utility of the justification for the, the 2.5 million dollar bond of what staff has proposed and, and did propose to utility. I'll next go to the sanitary sewer sheet, if you, if you're ready, if you don't have any questions. And again, in purple are the bonds, if you'll list it, look at fiscal year 24. And I'll just mention that the wastewater study was approved by council uh so that we know. We had talked about their possible um growth in the city for businesses that could come in uh where we would take more of the more concentrated B O Ds, and which, as you know, we're under permit from the state. We can only take so, so much of, of that sludge, et cetera. So that was the purpose of this, and if you, when we brought it to utility, and then I think council after that, what this report showed was there are more concerning items at that wastewater plant than looking at expansion. It was like, from what we got through, you need to fix what you have, basically, before you move forward on any expansion projects. Okay? So that's where we are today. That's how we got here today. And if you look at this in fiscal year 24, you'll look at the first vortex grit upgrades, grit washer, pump blowers. That's part of a bond of 583,000. Uh, the automatic mechanical fine screen of 519,500. And then a drain line removal and replaced with a lift station at the plant. These are priority projects that we talked about from that wastewater study. And then the last one, if you go down for the, the shaded areas, the roof replacement, at their same thing we talked about at water for the roofs uh when the plants were built, there hasn't been any, other than picking, there hasn't been any major renovations on those plants. Uh, roofs, so those are important to get done. And if you just slide up a little bit, um, official year 24 in the middle of the page, where you have sanitary sewer camera. We currently have one now that's breaking all the time. Uh, Pub Works uses that camera all the time. It's very important that we have that to evaluate. I know it comes to utility when people have sewer problems. Well, the main thing, what uh Public Works does, they have that camera. They can look and see what the problem is. Unfortunately, that thing costs $120,000. A new jet truck is several years old that we need to look at replacing. Uh, the cost of that is $500,000. Uh, and that's another one that uses to flush out those sewers. And is that correct, guys? How, what that's used for? Okay? And then uh, if you remember the lawsuit that was filed uh by the county on the city, on Drain, on Drain's district. And so we have to bu- budget some money to fix that problem as a result of that lawsuit. So we have 50,000 in fiscal year 24, budgeted 55 in fiscal year 25, and then the other 45 in fiscal year 26, and the county's paying up to 45,000 of those costs. The projected cost is around $150,000. And if you notice that, so the sanitary sewer and the jet truck, we plan on using cash for that, because we can't use S R F money for that. And you'll notice that in fiscal year 24, we plan on bond or, or budgeting 250,000. Keep it in the bank, and for fiscal year 25, we'll budget another 250,000 so that we can replace that truck. That truck actually can't be replaced. Actually, we get into fiscal year 25. And as a reminder, the budget we're working on now is fiscal year 24, which takes, takes effect July 1st, 2023. So all those added up equals just under 2.5 million, but remember, there are costs to bond of fees that the city has to pay. So that covers the projects at the sanity, or at the wastewater plant. I'll pick any questions if there are any. Um, otherwise, I will share with you that the, the um utility board voted unanimously to recommend the council for the 10-year bond for both the water plant and, and correct me if I'm wrong here, because I don't have those notes in front of me. The water plant and the wastewater plant uh at uh 10 years, 3% increase each year for three years, and then that would drop to 2% each year to cover inflation and everything for future projects in the year that we will obviously have to pay for as these plants get uh year by year get older and older. Um, Stephen, did I phrase that correctly on what the utility board recommended to council?
Yep.
Okay, so that includes my presentation and the reasons why we're coming forward to call council the increases and the importance of them and why we feel that they need to be done. Um, I'll turn it back over to you, sir.
So this is just, uh, Bill explained in detail. This is uh obviously something that we no longer on some of these issues can continue to just kick the can down the road. This is an introductory, the plants that are getting aged. You saw the roof pictures up there. Those are things that uh clearly need to be fixed, and uh we need to make this a priority, and the way to do that is uh budget, do the bond and plan for the increases that we need to do over time uh with our, with our rates. So it's the council that made the decision uh at our last meeting that we would recommend doing that cities provision for us. I think it's important to move ahead.
So as, as we do that, uh, I don't think we need a vote tonight, because it'll come to you in the form of a new ordinance. So uh, we can ask Jim to put that ordinance together on what these increases will be in the years and everything, and then bring that ordinance back to council for its first reading. Do you go for that?
I guess I, I will comment. I think it's quite remarkable that there haven't been increases one for 22 years and the other for what, about six years? So that's
Yes.
Right there. That's probably unusual for most.
If you factor in inflation each year, we've absorbed those every single year when we've budgeted uh for the water plant and the wastewater plant. It's just no longer, we cannot do it anymore.
Can I, I prepare a spreadsheet there for you so you can see?
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry, Terry. I should have mentioned that.
Yeah, see what the rate increase would be in the next five years. An idea what we're asking. In red is the average.
Is it good? Go ahead. Uh, economic development, Terry.
Um, nothing to report other than it's haven't gone by Jimmy John's. They are setting the building as we speak, so should be any day.
Okay, uh, department reports, building official Ed's not with us this evening, correct? Oh, you are, Ed. Said you weren't here.
Sorry. Anything, Ed?
Uh, finance officer, Andrea.
Come along. So I will try to be quick. Um, so I'm here where there are all these state reports that have to be filed. Uh, the first one um is the TIP certification. This is something that Aunt Maggie reached back on um beginning of the meeting, and we use her report and my information to determine how much money we need to request um from the county to pay our obligations in regards to our urban renewal um and uh economic development uh agreements. So that's the first one. That one has to be filed with the state or with the county by December 1st. Uh, the next one is our annual urban renewal report that also has to do with TIP and our urban renewal areas. And what that one does is tells the state where we're spending our money, what money, um, what development agreements we have, and what the balance of, of all those developments are in each particular um urban renewal area. And the last one is the annual finance report uh for fiscal year 2022, and that report tells the state. And that report tells the state how much money we received last year, how much money we spent, what our cash balances is, and in each of those each of those funds. With that one, there has been some rumors and some comments being out there that the city has twenty million dollars in reserves. Um, this report is where you find that information. Um, we do have a twenty million dollar cash balance. However, that is not in general fund. That is split between all of our funds. That takes into our account money that we have set aside for that U V disinfection project. That takes into our account money for our water and sewer plants, um, health insurance trust and agencies. Um, and yes, general fund, but majority of that is not in general fund. Um, but on page nine of line one, uh, on page nine, line one forty-seven, we'll give you that split of where those funds um are and what the cash balance is. Um, if you have any questions on any of those, I would be more than happy to answer this, either a uh email or a phone call or set up a time that you can come in and we can look at it together. Um, I'd be happy to do that. Uh, the next thing that you have on your desk from me to go in line with those cash reserves and why we have those cash reserves is that um I was at a budget workshop with Iowa League of Cities last uh week, and they were full of not so good news. Um, we are looking at uh several cuts in our property tax revenue um in last three grow valuations um over the next four to five years. Some of those cuts um we have been aware of um that that we're going to be coming down um onto the cities. Um, but we still got to account for those things that we have not had to count for. Um, so this is the document that I'm I'm talking about. Uh, some of them are the commercial and industrial uh rollback that we used to get paid um on our property taxes. We used to get a hundred percent of their valuation times our city tax. Uh, of course, in two thousand fifteen, they reduced that to ninety percent. Um, that was then backfilled by the state, and now they're eliminating that backfill. So you're looking at a um a result of about a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars in the city um revenue that we're going to have to accommodate. That's not just general fund, but that's a total. Um, I believe it's about seventy-seven thousand dollars in general fund. Um, along those same lines, um the multi-residential rollback uh that used to also be classified of backup. The multi-residential are any properties that have three or more apartments in them. They used to be classified as commercial. They then created a new class called the multi-residential. And then they slowly um reduced the hundred percent down to the residential. Uh, so fiscal year twenty twenty-three, so um the current year is our first year of seeing that commercial property now being classified as residential. So you're going from hundred percent down to fifty-four percent. Uh, so you're taking a hundred thousand dollars and getting taxed on a hundred thousand dollars down to fifty-four thousand dollars. So those things are affecting our revenues as they come in. Um, that is actually a pretty minor um amount. That's about fifty thousand dollars to our general fund um that you're looking at um per year. Uh, the new one is our business tax credits. That one will be uh for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Um, what they have done with that, it used to be that businesses that owned property could apply for a tax credit, just like homeowners could apply for a homestead credit. Um, businesses could apply for this credit, and they would get a reduction on their property taxes on the first two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. It was automatic. Uh, it was not automatic. They had to apply for it. The state then was filling that void up for the city. That has now been changed to what they call a two-tier taxing system for um property, commercial, industrial railroad properties. Um, and it's no longer back. It will no longer be backfilled. They have about a hundred and twenty-six million dollars that they're going to use. But once that money is gone, it's gone. Um, and they're looking at about fiscal year twenty twenty-nine. And that's about, um, so what that does is the first hundred and fifty thousand dollars on all commercial property will be taxed at a residential rate, not at the ninety percent rate. So that's a pretty big cut. Um, and then anything after that hundred and fifty thousand will be taxed at the ninety percent rate. Um, that is approximately a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars per year that the city will be cut. Uh, some good news since I've given you all the bad news here. Um, is that the rollback for next fiscal year has increased by two point three percent. So that means that um right now we're getting fifty percent on a hundred thousand. We're getting property taxes on fifty-four thousand dollars. Next year, we'll get fifty-six thousand dollars, the property taxes on the fifty-six thousand dollars. Um, separate from property taxes, uh local option sales tax took a pretty big hit uh last month. Um, and the state actually saw a statewide average of a reduction of three point four percent. Um, if we were to only be affected by that three point four percent, that would be about a sixty-one thousand dollars per year of reduction, not a huge deal. The problem is, is last month, we actually got a thirty-two percent reduction, which is a forty thousand dollar reduction in one month. Um, I'm not going to panic yet. Um, hopefully the holidays will come around here and we'll see a uptick in that. And it was just we'll just write it off as a bad month.
This was the good news part?
This is the bad news. A rollback was the news. Um, but I I'll keep you guys informed. We, I have not gotten November's yet. So that was October's that we hit up the big hit. Um, but I will keep you guys informed on what we're getting. So I think that's it. I will take any questions.
Thank you. Okay, next up, city attorney Jim.
Continuing to report on the request for records. The Central Iowa Expo Board has applied to me the records as requested, absent any explanation for their change. I today talked to the Boone County Attorney and the Auditor's Office. They have compiled the records as requested. And they're just waiting for me to to come over and 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 look at what I want. Once I do that, I will put those records together and submit those uh for your overview and your consideration. I hope we can do that within the next couple of weeks. So that's where we're at with that.
Okay.
I have nothing else.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Director Public Works.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Pollution authorizing execution of that sewer project bid. That's the cured-in-place poly-pipelining on South Boone, South Green and Woodland that was discussed heavily earlier in the spring. That will get that area done and that is part of the C I P project budget.
Need a motion.
So moved.
I can call the roll.
Closeback?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Science?
Yes.
Foreman?
Yes.
Okay, next up, engineer Bill.
Yep, thank you. I got it, sir. Your first one is no, no action is required, just for information. This is your preliminary certificate of substantial completion for the backwash uh replacement program at the water uh treatment facility, what I, which I discussed earlier. This is just letting you know that it's preliminary substantially completed. And with that comes, of course, a pay request from, I think, Stories Construction's doing it. Uh, it's uh, there's a resolution uh the payment of of greater than one hundred thousand dollars. Uh, resolution three zero five five, and I would need a motion and approval to pay that.
So moved.
Second, call the roll.
We can just put. Williamson?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Bird?
Yeah.
Science?
Yes.
Foreman?
Yes.
Closeback?
Yes.
Okay, uh, public safety, Chief Adams.
Don't report here.
Uh, Chief Weebold.
Don't report here.
Uh, city administrator Bill.
Thank you. Just a few updates to council uh in regards to the remodeling of City Hall. Bathroom was a priority for uh this council. Uh, we have got bids from between twenty-six and thirty thousand to remodel both of them. Uh, since we're remodeling them, we're required to make them ADA, so that's going to obviously increase the cost. So uh, we move, we hope to move forward with those projects um this winter.
Yeah.
Second thing is uh the final plans for the South Marion and West Park Avenue paving project have been submitted uh by S E H to the D O T for consideration. Uh, that project will be let in February of twenty-three. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Number six, consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that you would like removed and discussed separately? And if not, I need a motion to approve.
Approve, second.
Call the roll.
Frank?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Science?
Yes.
Foreman?
Yes.
Okay, number seven, we have nothing this evening. Number eight, uh mayor's comments. I put this on to discuss the rec center. Um, little background, we had a meeting with the park board um recently, and there was really no desire on the park boards um of of having a a wellness center in the park, which we just put it out there to see. So I've talked with economic, um Ames Economic Development, the um Citizens Group, um Boone Economic Growth. We spoke with Fairway. And I think we all agree that we need to just pause this um as far as the wellness center. And I'm going to put a task force together that would probably start the beginning of the year, get through the holidays and basically look for a location. We have nothing really right now as far as the location. And um it's pretty obvious nobody wanted it in the park. Okay, that's fine. Um, it's just one of these things, every, everywhere we go, there's always opposition. That's fine. We're just putting it out there, but there's nothing to put out there right now. So what I'm asking the council tonight is to put it on pause, cancel the election in March. So we'll remove that date. Task force together, and this will be a wide spread group throughout the community. And then we'll start looking for location. I I have to tell you, Fairway is very much on board still. Uh, they'd love to see a a rec center. And I mean, they're 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 all for it. And I mean, they uh and I appreciate them staying on board as far, as long as this is taken, so um.
I don't think we have any choice but to put it on hold right now. We have no location. And me, that's a major part of it. And especially, you know, I know it came up uh at our public forum. You know, what that actually will entail. You know, we we've kind of, is it a community center? Is it going to be a field house?
Right.
Is it going to be four gymnasiums? I mean, until we kind of get it narrowed down to this is actually what the community wants.
Right.
There's nothing really to vote on yet. I mean,
I mean, we're looking at obviously having, putting some funding out there available to hire a rec director. Um. Like I said in the last meeting, that we've got groups all, you know, we've got soccer, we've got basketball, we've got youth this. I mean, they're all it'd be nice to have a rec director that would oversee everything, bring it together. But the main thing is we don't have a location to put. You know, we're we're, and they do a great job. These coaches do awesome. There are volunteers. They take a lot of time, you know? And a- and I think they want to see something as well, but we got to do it right. Um, the park thing's not going to work, okay? It's not the end of the world. We need to move forward. We need to put a task force together. And I've got a group or quite a list of names already that we'll probably contact. You know, involving the schools, the hospital, the a lot of different groups, the youth groups that um these sporting groups. But so we'll work on that. But I guess what I need right now from council is just a vote to eliminate the election in March and pause this until we put a task force together.
Make that motion.
Second. Call the roll.
Bird?
Yes.
Science?
Yes.
Foreman?
Yes.
Closeback?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Okay, uh, number nine, council comments. Any council comments this evening? Number ten, any public comments for items not on the agenda?
I have a comment.
Yes.
Couple of comments. I'm like, well, thank you first of all for um listening to the community about the awesome. Um, a couple of things. Number one, um, about the water. So definitely foresee back in the agenda. Um, do we not have a citizens have a capital improvement project fee on one of them? I think there was a capital improvement line.
We no longer have that.
Okay.
We haven't had it for years. Um, when we had the um mandate from the D N R uh back in oh seven, that's what that was. And then we switched that into our bond payment as part of your rate after we got a rate structure.
Okay, um, so you're saying two thousand seven?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know when it off, but I know that bringing that topic.
Uh, jet truck, um, how many jet trucks do we have? This is the one?
Yep.
Was that the one that was out on my street? Wait, I don't know if it's on the street.
Um, I'm assuming there's a contractor to have them. City of Boone on it.
It is, alright. Um, so I met you. You were very nice, by the way. Uh, so um, I'm just, you know, wondering why that truck is, maybe that's an offline thing. And then um new ordinance, uh Scare, you mentioned that there's going to be new orders you're going to bring. When are you going to bring that to the council?
As the city attorney gets one put together.
Okay, so estimated timelines?
Um, couple of weeks.
Before Christmas, you think?
Yeah, it'll probably be one of the meetings in December.
Great. Last question, urban renewal area areas, Andrea. Where are those located?
Uh, I have a map in my office. Uh, it's probably online also.
Okay.
We have like seven of them.
I thought so, but I couldn't ever find one location for those. I'll reach out to them. Thank you.
Any other public comments for items not on the agenda? Nothing, this meeting is adjourned.